Good morning. We want to start now. We have established a quorum. I'd ask that all guests and visitors please retire behind the rail. The members will take their seat and we'll get it rolling. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Bishop Keith W. Reed of Sharon Baptist Church. He is here today as a guest of Councilwoman Janie Blackwell. I would ask all guests and visitors and members to please rise.
Gracious God, our Father, we come this morning to thank you for this privilege and this opportunity to call on your name. We also thank you for giving us the opportunity to live, move, and have our being, for this is a day that you've made and you've allowed us to be in it. Father, you told us to come boldly to the throne of grace, that we might find grace and mercy to help us in the time of need. So we need your grace, we need your mercy. And I pray for those that are in this chamber this morning. I thank you for each and every one of them that are here and that has been elected here, for they are in positions of authority that you have created. I pray that even now you would crown each and every one of them with wisdom, insight, discernment, to represent the concerns of your people, so that they may be concerned about who they represent in this place, that they may be able to have wisdom on the right judgments that need to be made. Lord, I ask you in the name that's above every name, to guide them, to guard them, to lead them. Pray for our school systems, we pray for the decisions they have to make about that. You would give them insight and foresight. The many concerns that will lay before them, guide them, Lord. Please, direct them to do that which is right, for your glory and our good. We ask it in the name that's above every name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Pastor, for those inspiring words. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Monday, January the 4th, 2016, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Monday, January 4th, 2016 be approved.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Monday, January 4th, 2016. Stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. Next order of business is request for release of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for release of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. The Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone who has come down and taken time out of their busy day to see their government in action. We really appreciate the fact that you've come down, and we actually hope you enjoy yourself so much that you come back again. So again, thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez, who present a resolution on my behalf recognizing the 50th anniversary of Community College of Philadelphia. With Dr. Generals Jr. and those accompanying him, please join the Councilwoman at the podium.
Hey, sir. How you doing? Hey, my man. What's up?
And joining Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, we have Councilwoman Parker.
Janie. Okay.
Where's she at?
Good morning. It is a pleasure, on behalf of Council President Clark, to present this today. Council President and I agree on many issues regarding housing, but next to housing and the need for housing in the city of Philadelphia, when you talk to the Council President, he'll talk about jobs, jobs, and jobs. And recognizing Community College of Philadelphia in particular is very important, because that should be the place where we develop our young college students who can transition into four-year institutions. It is the place where people get retrained. It is the place that we expect to help us as we build this pre-K model that in the city that we're going to be adopting. It is the place people should be able to come and prepare the returning citizens and others. And for me, Community College of Philadelphia is hugely important as we really try to combat our poverty and prepare folks to become self-sufficient. It is a pleasure always to work with Lynette Brown, so who is a staple here and is a guiding force at Community College, and to welcome Dr. Generals, although he's been here for quite a while, not sure he's come before council before in this way, to welcome Dr. Generals, who from day one understood the value of the diversity and the issues that are impacting the Community College community. So with that, honoring and recognizing and celebrating the 50th anniversary of Community College of Philadelphia. Whereas for 50 years, Community College of Philadelphia has been contributing towards the betterment of citizens throughout this city by providing exceptional educational opportunities to its residents. And whereas, on September 23rd, 1965, Community College of Philadelphia first opened its doors to 1,200 students. Since then, it has graduated 54,000 students, many of whom would not have been given the opportunity to acquire a higher education degree or certificate. Whereas, to date, it serves more than 30,000 students each year at its main campus and three regional centers, and offers more than 70 associates degree academic certificate programs. Whereas, this year, alumni are reaching milestones in the city of Philadelphia and across the world, including the White House Social Secretary Desha Dyer, Hayward L. Bell, Chief Diversity Officer, Wraith &amp; Company, for Wraith &amp; Company, Dr. Kathleen Hetherton, President of Howard Community College, Luis Torado, owner of Torado Construction Company, and Fire Commissioner Derek Sawyer. And whereas innovative projects and centers of excellence, such as the Center for Science and Engineering Education, the Center for Male Engagement, the Fox Rothschild Center for Law and Society, the Center for International Understanding, and the Re-Entry Support Project enhance and deepen the learning experience while accessing and strengthening community
Further resolve that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Dr. Donald Generals, President of the Community College of Philadelphia, and other members of the staff, faculty, and board of this great institution. Further resolve that this resolution is a true and correct copy of the original resolution adopted by the Council of the City of Philadelphia on the 19th day of November 2015, and it's co-sponsored by all members of City Council.
And the Chair recognizes Dr. Generals for remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the City Council. I'm honored to be here on behalf of Community College of Philadelphia and receive, as well as celebrate, this recognition with regards to our first 50 years. I'd like to recognize the individuals behind me. They all represent different sectors within the college. We have faculty, we have students, the most important sector, we have administrators and staff. So it is a group effort, and I also want to recognize and acknowledge the thousands of individuals who came before us. We stand on the shoulders of those who believed in the concept of a community college as a transformative institution. So many of you, many of your relatives, many of the people who were in the city of Philadelphia long before I arrived, a year and a half ago, which from what I understand, by Philadelphia standards, is really nothing. Those were individuals who understood the importance of a community college, and so they need to be acknowledged and recognized as well. We consider the next 50 years CCP 2.0. We've had, as Councilwoman acknowledged, over 50, actually closer to 70,000 students who have graduated. We've had over 600,000 citizens come through the doors. We like to tout the many legendary graduates, as were acknowledged in the resolution, and we think they are important and symbols of the greatness that can be achieved as a result of this education. But I'd like to also recognize and acknowledge the many individuals who are teachers, who are administrators, who work in the fire department and the police department, and may not have the legendary names that some of the individuals who were recognized in the resolution. And they're good citizens, they're out in the community, they're coaching baseball teams, football teams, and these are individuals that we have developed and we have demonstrated through their efforts how we can transform the efforts that need to be transformed in this city. So CCP 2.0 will continue what we do. We do transform lives. We will expand our course offerings to further align ourselves, not only with the four-year institutions, but especially with the career and technical needs of the city. We think that's an integral part of what we do. I like to say that we blend the education, so we train, but we also continue to enlighten our citizens and help them to understand how important it is for them not only to acquire really good salable skills, but to also be good citizens in the city of Philadelphia. We are working very closely and very intimately with the public school systems. We think we cannot do our jobs unless we are able to partner with the school systems through our dual enrollment programs and through our special programs. We're working on an early college program with the public school system. So we believe in the idea that students don't have to wait until they're 18 years old to go to college. They can actually start going to college when they're 15, 16. That's what's happening around the country, and that's what we're hoping to do here. So I could go on and on and on. A lot was said in the resolution. I'm really grateful for this recognition, and I do speak on behalf of the many individuals who come before us, as well as those who work with me on a daily basis. So thank you, and have a good season.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla, who present a citation recognizing WHYY as they present the final season of Dalton Abbey with Bill Marazo and those accompanying him. Please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Squilla, we have Councilwoman Bass.
This is a great occasion to honor WHYY and what they do for us, not only here in Philadelphia, but for the entire region. The Council of the City of Philadelphia is pleased and proud to join WHYY as they honor and recognize their final season of Dalton Abbey. Whereas, WHYY has been Greater Philadelphia's leading public media provider, serving southeastern Pennsylvania, southern New Jersey, and all of Delaware for 60 years. WHYY takes pride in bringing audiences news when they need it, entertainment when they want it, and education when it counts, on television, radio, the web, and in the community. WHYY TV is the primary PBS station in the Delaware Valley. WHYY FM 90.9 is the leading public radio station in the region.
And whereas, Dalton Abbey is one of the most-watched series ever on WHYY. Since its debut on PBS in 2011, Dalton Abbey has been a runway hit with fans enjoyed by people of all ages and demographics. Dalton Abbey is now in its sixth and final season, with 59 Emmy nominations, more than any other non-U.S. show in Emmy history. Dalton Abbey is one of the most-honored series on television, and whereas Dalton Abbey has won 12 Emmys, three Golden Globes, three Screen Actor Guild Awards, a Producers Guild Award, and three BAFTAs, as well as a 2015 BAFTA Special Award in recognition of the series' outstanding global success.
Therefore, by virtue of this citation, the Council of the City of Philadelphia does hereby join WHYY as an honor to recognize their final season of Dalton Abbey. We commend all involved in this momentous occasion, extends sincere respect and admiration of this legislative body. Congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes Mr. Marazo for remarks. Please, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council, and if I may, Mr. President, also recognize our good friend, the legendary Kenny Gamble, and other viewers and listeners of WHYY. We are always honored to represent the more than 7 million people that WHYY reaches every 30 days here in the Delaware Valley. And as the good Councilman suggested, in this very complicated media landscape, there ought to be one media outlet that you can go to for trusted news and information, one place where you can have creative expression with the tuning of a dial and an opportunity for lifelong learning. Dalton Abbey is an example, but gratefully not the only one of our programs that reaches so many people across all demographics here in the Delaware Valley. So finally, I might add, while it's always an honor for me to represent WHYY, particularly in this august chamber, it's a particular pleasure to be able to say, in a rich, diverse community like the city of Philadelphia, there ought to be one thing we all have in common, and that is WHYY. Thanks for this high honor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant-at-Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Deckard, please read those communications.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable party, a resolution appointing Clarina Tolson to the Board of Directors of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, and a resolution appointing Beverly Coleman to the Board of Directors of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, and a resolution approving the appointment of Falacide Alana Picken Lewis to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Storm Water Rate Board, and a resolution confirming the appointment of Sozi Pedro Tulante Esquire as the city solicitor, and an ordinance amending section 9703 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Special Assembly Occupancies by providing for additional types of activity to be regulated, amending the application procedures and increasing the fee for a special assembly occupancy license, and for promoter registration. And an ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 42 S and abandoning of a right-of-way for reserved for drainage purposes, water main purposes, and public utility purposes, which extends from the southerly terminus of Galloway Street, south of Packer Avenue, southward lead to Patterson Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 27 S and abandoning of a certain right-of-way reserved for drainage purposes within the lines of former Jackson Street, from Swanson Street to Vandalia Street. And an ordinance authorizing the managing director to contract with the Support Center for Child Advocates for the provision of professional services to the city for representing children in certain legal matters, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Deckard. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you. Those messages will be printed in today's journal. Thank you very much. And the next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. Today I offer two ordinances, one on your behalf and four privileged resolutions.
An ordinance amending section 17107 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contractors' Labor Management Relationships by requiring the city's Labor Standards Unit to enforce the city's contract requirements for workforce diversity and by providing penalties for contractor failure to make good faith efforts to meet workforce diversity goals.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending subsection 192604, subparagraph 8 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Green Roots Tax Credit, to amend definitions and make other technical changes.
The bill will also be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring the African-American Children's Book Project on the occasion of its 24th annual African-American Children's Book Fair, and that February 6th is a continuation of its ongoing national literacy initiative, Preserve a Legacy by a Book.
That resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing January as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Philadelphia.
And that will also be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing Philadelphia City Council's Committee on Labor and Civil Service to conduct public hearings to examine Philadelphia's Civil Service Rule of Two.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on the Environment to hold public hearings on implementing sustainable procurement practices for the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce one bill co-sponsored by Councilwoman Parker, two resolutions, one co-sponsored by Councilwoman Gem, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Parker, and I introduce a second resolution that's co-sponsored by most members of council.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
And an ordinance amending chapter 9, 1,000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Trades to add section 9, 1,009 entitled Restoration Contractor License to require restoration contractors to obtain a license, city license, and comply with other requirements.
The bill will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphia Police Officer Jesse Hartnett for exhibiting undeniable bravery, resilience, and dedication to protecting the city of Philadelphia in the face of mortal danger.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution calling for the City Council Committee on Education to hold hearings on the status of public schools in Philadelphia, the programs that exist, and what we can do to ensure that every student receive a quality education and support services necessary for positive childhood outcomes.
This week's final passes calendar. And the Chair now recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer five bills, two on your behalf, one of the others is co-sponsored by Council members Dom Green and Tobenberger, and also one resolution on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending title 12 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code to provide requirements regarding the safe operation of self-propelled mobility devices and provide for enforcement and penalties, and an ordinance authorizing the managing director to contract with the Support Center for Child Advocates for the provision of professional services to the city for representing children in certain legal matters, and an ordinance amending chapter 2, 200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Recording of Deeds to provide for further action by the Department of Records in cases where the department reasonably suspects that a deed has been mistakenly recorded and that a... and that a fraudulent transfer of real property described therein has occurred. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Ridge Avenue, 16th Street, Agnes Street, 15th Street, Poplar Street, Carlisle Street, and Brown Street. And an ordinance repealing an ordinance, Bill Number 150894, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Striking from City Plan Number 119 and Abandoning of a Certain Pedestrian Walkway Reserved Within the Bed of Former Thompson Street from Watts Street to 13th Street.
Those five bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 32nd Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Today I offer one bill and five resolutions on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Torresdale Avenue from Linden Avenue to Ashburner Street, and both sides of Marguerite Street from Torresdale Avenue to Frankfurt Avenue.
And will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the reappointment of Beverly Coleman to the Board of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, and a non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of Clarina Tolson to the Board of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, and a non-privileged resolution confirming the appointment of Sosie Pedro Tulante Esquire as the city solicitor. And a non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of Falasade Alana Picken Lewis to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rate Board. And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the appointment of a chief ethics officer for the Council of the City of Philadelphia.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Four resolutions will be referred to committee. The chief ethics officer's resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar. And the chair now recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one resolution co-sponsored by Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Gem, Councilman Green, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman O., Councilman Sanchez, and Councilwoman Parker. And I'd like to be recognized after the reading of the titles.
Actually, Councilwoman, I'm wanting to recognize you now.
Appreciate it. I couldn't sleep last night trying to find appropriate words that I would say to you as for the introduction of this resolution. And after I prayed on it, I found them. There are 200,000 Muslims in and around the city of Philadelphia. There are over 65 mosques in the city of Philadelphia. Muslim children from K to 12 represent approximately 20% of the student body. Yet, the most compelling reason why we opened and introduced this legislation came from a student. I believe she went to Central High School. And she was asked how she felt by the fact that her religious observance, her two holidays that are significant to her spiritual growth, were not recognized. And the word that rung in my ear and tattooed on my heart was the word marginalized, marginalized. And I thought about it, and I thought about it, and I wondered if I ever truly ever felt marginalized. And I remember going to the department store at Winemakers with my mother, who was a taxpayer, who was a government worker, who was a solid citizen even with being my mother. She would walk into that store, and immediately her demeanor changed. Her demeanor changed towards me. She would clutch me and my brother close, and it was almost as if she was apologizing for spending her money in that store. As a young person, that was the first time ever I felt marginalized. And I swore, after hearing that young lady's voice, that none of our children, none of them, of any race, creed, color, or religion should ever feel marginalized again. I have my grandchildren there, right there. She just waved, not you. And I would do everything legal in my power as a councilperson to make sure they never, ever felt that feeling. We are teachers, auditors, doctors, city workers, lawyers, business persons, men and women, artists, and many of them have come down here today. And I'd like them to stand and be recognized, and as importantly, be welcomed to the city of Philadelphia in City Hall. So I was asked by a good-hearted person, a well-meaning person. They said, "Well, Councilman, shouldn't you wait to introduce this with all that's going on in the world? Jason Dawkins is a state representative, and he heard some of these conversations. Shouldn't you wait because of the international friction between religions and governments? And shouldn't you wait based on what happened even here in the city of brotherly love?" And I said to myself, and I thought on it, and I said words that I'm paraphrasing from another great man, "If not now, when? If not us, who? And if we don't speak about it now, Mr. President, dispel myths and boogeymen's, because we come in different shapes, sizes, colors, heights. Some of them are Republicans." But what is most important is that they are citizens, and they are taxpayers, and that this city was founded on religious tolerance. William Penn came here fleeing religious persecution and established a beachhead of freedom. I think this resolution speaks to that. We always don't get it right here in this country, but we keep coming back at it until we do. And for those reasons, I submit this resolution today, which will eventually begin the dialogue between the administration, between the four unions to establish a religious holiday, the two Eids, for the Muslim community in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Mr. President.
The chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, I would request and make a motion...
Okay, I'm sorry, hold on, Councilman. We gotta read the resolution, my fault.
Okay, oh, sorry.
A non-privileged resolution calling upon the city of Philadelphia and the school district of Philadelphia to recognize Eid al-Fitr, the end of the holy month of Ramadan, and Eid al-Aadha, which commemorates Hajj, the annual holy pilgrimage to Mecca, and to observe both Eids in the same manner as other legally recognized holidays in Philadelphia.
Thank you. Do you want to do that now?
Yes. Mr. President, if I could, could I call for a rule suspension thus allowing this resolution to be read and voted on this day?
Been moved in properly. Been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have three bills and two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
And ordinance amending Chapter 193900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Tax Exemptions for Longtime Owner Occupants of Residential Properties by extending the time for which such exemptions are available. And an ordinance amending Chapter 10100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Animals by providing requirements relating to the retail sale of certain animals. And an ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 42S and abandonment of a certain right-of-way reserved for drainage purposes, water main purposes, and public utility purposes, which extends from the southerly terminus of Galloway Street south of Packer Avenue, southward lead to Patterson Avenue.
Those three bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding the Pathways to Job Growth Report by the Central Philadelphia Development Corporation and the Center City District.
And that resolution will be on next week's final passes, this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the City Council's Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding economic opportunity and diversity participation at the Philadelphia International Airport and the Navy Yard.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. And the chair now recognizes Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 31st Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Good morning, Mr. President. I have three privileged resolutions. I would like to speak on the Public Safety Resolution at the time of its adoption.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings regarding social impact bonds.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding public banking.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Joint Committees on Education and Public Safety to conduct public hearings to examine the physical safety of Philadelphia schools.
And that will also be in this week's final passes calendar. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Mr. President, I offer two privileged resolutions, one on your behalf and one on my behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution authorizing a full and comprehensive investigatory public hearing by Council's Committee on Finance on the impact reverse mortgage lending products are having on residents of the city of Philadelphia. Specifically, the public hearings will seek to determine the extent and impact such lending products have on the city's senior citizen homeowners and the potential intergovernmental remedies that can be developed to protect consumers from any unintentional harms that may result from requiring this type of lending product.
And that resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authori... A non-privileged resolution authorizing the creation of a special committee on student loan debt to evaluate the impacts of student loan debt upon individual borrowers and the subsequent effect on the city of Philadelphia.
And that will also be in this week's final passes calendar. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gem.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have one bill and one resolution. The bill is co-sponsored by Councilmen Jones, Johnson, Quinones Sanchez, and Parker. And the resolution is co-sponsored by Councilwoman Blackwell, Reynolds Brown, Quinones Sanchez, Heenan, Squilla, Johnson, and Green.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And an ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections to add a chapter requiring businesses located in certain areas of the city, whether receive tax or other subsidies from the city, to provide certain economic development data to the city, and requiring the publication by the city of such data.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Children and Youth and the Committee on Education to conduct hearings concerning the impact of five years of reduced state funding on safety essential services and academic outcomes in Philadelphia schools and on vulnerable student populations.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Talkenberger.
Yes, good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
No bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills and one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Section 9703 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Special Assembly Occupancies by providing for additional types of activity to be regulated, amending the application procedures and increasing the fee for a special assembly occupancy license, and for promoter registration.
That bill will be sent to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 27S and abandoning of a right-of-way reserved for drainage purposes within the lines of former Jackson Street from Swanson Street to Vandalia Street.
And referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 31st Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and one privileged resolution, which was co-sponsored by Councilman Green and signed by all members of council.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
And ordinance amending Chapter 9800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant Rent Control by requiring the tenants of certain multifamily buildings be provided with a written disclosure of the building policy on smoking in individual dwelling units.
That will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Imhotep Institute Charter High School Football Program for a phenomenal season and for making Philadelphia history by becoming the city's first public league team to win a Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletic Association State Championship.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer nine bills, five resolutions, and six privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
And ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in the resolution approved by City Council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home War Charter so that that shall be established in the legislative branch of the city of Philadelphia government, the Legislative Budget Office. And an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia the proposal set forth in the resolution approved by City Council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home War Charter so that there shall be imposed upon the city of Philadelphia its pension and retirement system's financial discipline by amending Section 3803 of Article III, Executive and Administrative Branch Organization, Chapter 8, Independent Boards and Commissions, to rebalance the membership of the Board of Pensions and Retirement by adding independent experts. And an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment of the Philadelphia Home War Charter relating to establishing and defining a new method and qualifications for appointing and electing the members of the Board of Education. And an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home War Charter establishing and defining the responsibilities of the International Trade and Investment Authority. And an ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections to provide for tax rate reductions of the wage and earnings tax for Philadelphia residents and the tax on net profits earned in businesses, professions, or other activities for Philadelphia residents. And an ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections to provide for transfer of delinquent taxes and fees to a qualified third-party law firm or collection agency. And an ordinance amending Title... third-party law firm or collection agency. And an ordinance amending Title Seventeen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement by adding a new chapter entitled Local Performing Artists Requirement, requiring that ten percent of funds for performing arts events received at least one hundred thousand dollars of city financial resources be spent on local performing artists. And an ordinance amending Title Twelve of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code, Chapter Twelve One Hundred, General Provisions, by adding new definitions, and Chapter Twelve Nine Hundred Parking Regulations and Penalties, by adding live performing arts venue to the entities exempt from paying fees for curb-loading zone permits and adding a new section entitled Performing Arts Priority Loading and Unloading Zones. And an ordinance amending Title Nineteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections, Chapter Nineteen Eight Hundred, School Tax Authorization, Section Nineteen Eighteen Oh Six, Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax, by clarifying that banking is subject to the imposition of realty use and occupancy tax.
Thank you. Those nine bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committees.
And a privileged resolution. Authorizing the holding of public hearings pursuant to City Council's Declaration of Two Thousand and Sixteen as the year of, the year to combat the heroin abuse epidemic in Philadelphia to explore the serious effects that heroin abuse is having on our communities.
This week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing public hearings to evaluate the new infrared pothole repair process for possible future use in Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold public hearings to investigate the feasibility, benefits, and costs of establishing a twenty-four-hour arts and innovation section of the City of Philadelphia.
This week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold public hearings on Philadelphia's movement towards a smart city.
And will also be in this week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing, celebrating, and thanking the Philadelphia Chinatown Development Corporation and expressing the appreciation of the people of Philadelphia for its excellent service protecting and advancing Chinatown's interests and thus the city's interests as well as its cultural diversity on the occasion of its fiftieth anniversary.
This week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Two Thousand and Fifteen winners of the PHL Live Center Stage.
And that will be on this week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution respectfully requesting the Prime Minister of Israel, the Honorable Benjamin Netanyahu, to maintain and support the Foreign Ministry of Israel's diplomatic mission in the United States by retaining the consulate general of Israel to the Mid-Atlantic region in Philadelphia.
That will be on next week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter in preparation for a return to local Philadelphia control of, of the Philadelphia School District by providing for a new method and qualifications for appointing and electing the members of the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia and establishing new standards and policies to ensure academic excellence, financial responsibility, and efficient economical and effective operation and management of the School District of Philadelphia. And a non-privileged resolution proposing amendment of, of the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to provide for the creation, appointment, powers, and duties of an international trade and investment authority. And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter so that there shall be established in the legislative branch of the City of Philadelphia Government, the Legislative Budget Office. And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment of, to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter so that there shall be imposed upon the City of Philadelphia's pension and retirement system, financial, systems financial discipline by amending Section Three Eight Oh Three of Article Three, Executive and Administrative Branch Organization, Chapter Eight, Independent Boards and Commissions, to rebalance the membership of the Board of Pensions and Retirement by adding independent experts.
Thank you. Those four resolutions will be referred to the appropriate committee. We have no committee reports today, so we will move on to the consideration of the calendar. And the next order of business is the calendar. There being no bills on the first reading calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolution is being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill Number One Six Zero 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 One. There are no further resolutions or bills on second reading and final passages for today's calendar.
Thank you very much. Before considering the resolutions we have for today, we will consider public comment as follows. If there is anyone who is interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on a final passage calendar today, we have somewhat of a limited calendar, I'd ask if you have not already done so, sign up at the table at my left. If, when your name is called, you will be asked to go to the podium, the middle of the council session. On that podium, there is a device, there's a light on there. When the light turns green, it is your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks. And when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Mr. Decker, do you have anyone who is interested in testifying today?
There are no speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
There was a long comment for no speakers. Thank you. There being none. We will now move to our calendar. We will now consider the resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendar today. Mr. Decker, please read the title of the resolution.
Resolution Number One Six Zero 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 One, entitled a resolution to provide rules for the government of the Council of the City of Philadelphia.
And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment on your behalf to Resolution Number One Six Zero 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 One. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I now move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. The amendment to Resolution One Six Oh Oh One has been adopted, and this resolution will be on our... All right. We will now recognize Councilwoman Blackwell for motion on the amended version of One Six Oh Zero Zero One.
Mr. President, I move that the adoption of the resolution as amended.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. And Resolution One Six Oh Zero Zero One has been adopted. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution honoring the African-American Children's Book Project on the occasion of its twenty-fourth anniversary African-American Children's Book Fair, and that February sixth is a continuation of its ongoing National Literacy Initiative, Preserve the Legacy by a Book, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing January as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Moved in property second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Philadelphia City Council's Committee on Labor and Civil Service to conduct public hearings to examine Philadelphia's Civil Service Rule Two, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Been moved in property second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on the Environment to hold public hearings on implementing sustainable procurement practices for the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair, one more time, recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphia Police Officer Jesse Hartnett for exhibiting undeniable bravery, resilience, and dedication to protecting the City of Philadelphia in the face of mortal danger, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. We move for the adoption.
Been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution calling for the City Council Committee on Education to hold hearings on the status of public schools in Philadelphia, the programs that exist, and what we can do to ensure that every student receives a quality education and support services necessary for positive childhood outcome comes, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. The last resolution is cosponsored by Councilman Don, and for this one, we move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution calling upon the City of Philadelphia and the School District of Philadelphia to recognize Eid al-Fitr, the end of the holy month of Ramadan, and Eid al-Adha, which commemorates Hajj, the annual holy pilgrimage to Mecca, and to observe both Eids in the same manner as other legally recognized holidays in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding the Pathways to Job Growth Report by the Central Philadelphia Development Corporation and the Center City District, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding economic opportunity and diversity participation in the Philadelphia International Airport and the Navy Yard, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Counsel President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings regarding social impact bonds, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding public banking, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Joint Committees on Education and Public Safety to conduct public hearings to examine the physical safety of Philadelphia schools, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is cosponsored by Councilman Jones, Councilman Gim, Councilwoman Blackwell, who in her district, the Locke School recently had a challenge where it was closed due to maintenance problems. This resolution is also cosponsored by Councilwoman Parker, who's in this, who has the Edmund School in her district, and she's really taken the lead on the explosion that occurred in her district that really impacted both residents and constituents. And I'm really concerned in reference to this resolution as regards to the Edmunds explosion, that we had a, an employee, Chris Trachemis, who was critically injured in this Edmunds explosion. And I'm really concerned because many other people could have been hurt, but due to the quick thinking of a building engineer who took heroic actions, many other people were not hurt in this action. And from my perspective, and no maintenance instructional or other type of school district employee should be working in buildings suffering from unsafe conditions. We also have to make sure that every student deserves and requires for their educational attainment, the physical safety and psychological assurance of well-maintained premises. And also, parents across Philadelphia should feel just as comfortable sending their children into school buildings as they do visiting themselves. And for me, this is a very personal issue. Every day, I take my son to Houston Elementary School, and when I reflect on what happened at both the Locke School and Edmund School, I think about all the children, the students, the teachers at Houston Elementary School, and all parents, not just myself, but all parents around the school district and around the City of Philadelphia should be comfortable and rest assured that their children are safe during the day. And with that, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing a full and comprehensive investigatory public hearing by Council's Committee on Finance on the impact reverse mortgage lending products are having on residents in the City of Philadelphia. Specifically, the public hearings will seek to determine the extent and impact such lending products have on the city's senior citizen homeowners and the potential intergovernmental remedies that can be developed to protect, to protect consumers from any unintentional harms that may result from acquiring this type of lending product, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Co-sponsored by Councilwoman Blackwell, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. And all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Children and Youth and the Committee on Education to conduct hearings concerning the impact of five years of reduced state funding on safety, essential services, and academic outcomes in Philadelphia schools and on vulnerable student populations, introduced by Councilwoman Gim.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution was, was signed by most members of council. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Imhotep Institute Charter High School Football Program for a phenomenal season and for making Philadelphia history by becoming the city's first public league team to win a Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletic Association State Championship, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the holding of public hearings pursuant to City Council's Declaration of Two Thousand and Sixteen as the year to combat the heroin abuse epidemic in Philadelphia to explore the serious effects that heroin abuse is having on our communities, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. And all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing public hearings to evaluate the new infrared pothole repair process for possible future use in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved, it's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold public hearings to investigate the feasibility, benefits, and costs of establishing a twenty-four-hour arts and innovation section of the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair, one more time, recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you again. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold public hearings on Philadelphia's movement towards a smart city, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Move for the option of the resolution.
Been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing, celebrating, and thanking the Philadelphia Chinatown Development Corporation and expressing the appreciation of the people of Philadelphia for its excellent service protecting and advancing Chinatown's interests and thus the city's interests as well as its cultural diversity on the occasion of its fiftieth anniversary, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Two Thousand and Fifteen winners of PHL Live Center Stage, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That completes our calendar for the day. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to notify my council colleagues and the public that yesterday we had a press conference at Hyundai Rotem in South Philadelphia. Hyundai Rotem is a train manufacturer that was established in our city twelve years ago. Councilman Curtis Jones had a role in that, and he was there yesterday, as was Councilman Mark Squilla, the district council- Mark Squillen, the district councilman, and Councilman-at-Large Al Tomberger. I want to thank Governor Ed Rendell, who is the co-chair of Rebuilding America's Future, and Congressman Shaka Fatah for coming to the press conference, because what is at stake are between 250 and 300 good-paying union jobs, and these jobs are family-sustaining jobs in manufacturing. They're very good jobs, especially for those who don't have a college degree, and 20% of that workforce are returning citizens or ex-offenders. This is a place where people can get a brand-new start. That's a great thing about manufacturing. I'll point out that Councilman Bobby Heenan has a manufactured task force, and he has been a champion of that issue. However, what is at stake is, from 350 employees, the facility now has only 70 employees. But that facility, at its height of 350 employees, supports 5,000 other workers in small businesses supporting the transportation industry. Philadelphia is proud and fortunate to have a international high-speed train manufacturing company. What we have done is, we have passed a resolution on June 18th of last year, this council body, recommending to SEPTA that they implement local hiring preferences allowed by the federal government in its RFP. It is important for our city, because our city not only needs the employment and the branding and the global competitiveness that this train manufacturer brings, but it is also a city, unfortunately, that has high taxes and great needs. The last contract that they filled distributed $180 million to vendors in and around Philadelphia. Salaries, wage tax, sales tax, real estate tax, money for our schools as well. I would like to urge SEPTA to implement local hiring preferences as allowed by the federal government. To date, I'm only aware that Los Angeles County Transportation Authority has implemented these hiring preferences. A RFP for 55 cars worth $140 million is outstanding, and SEPTA will make its choice one way or the other. However, if we had implemented, that is, SEPTA implemented, local hiring preferences, it would certainly give an edge, an important and necessary edge to the Philadelphia-based train manufacturer, because if that train manufacturer closes, it would be, I think, disastrous for our city, and I think it would be a huge embarrassment for the world to know that our train manufacturer closed because we went to another state to purchase our trains. So I'm going to ask my council colleagues to sign the letter, Councilman Squillen and I have talked about, to SEPTA, to urge them to implement local hiring preferences. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, excuse me, question. Does the... So is it too late to have that language included in the RFP?
It is too late. That is the first phase of the RFP. There are some other phases coming, but, you know, I will say that I'm disappointed that we, as a body, when that law came out, when that opportunity came out on March 6th, 2015, we learned about it, we introduced it, we passed it, this body did, to help our city, our workers, our schools, our economy, and, to my knowledge, it has not been made part of the largest portion of this contract. There are other portions coming, but I will say that that $30 million investment is at risk. And quite frankly, they now have three other facilities in the United States. They opened here in the city of Philadelphia, and if they close, that would be a big problem, I think, for us.
Right. All right, Councilman, thank you. We will certainly follow up on that.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, I feel encouraged. I feel encouraged with the spirit in which our new freshmen have come into this council. I want to welcome them all, particularly my mate here next door. He is the second Greene to sit in that seat, although I will warn the press that he will not be as entertaining as the last Greene, although he will be very thoughtful. But it is really important that some of the thoughtful legislation that was introduced this morning was done so in a collaborative spirit, whether we're talking about education and Councilwoman Gim and Blackwell getting on that very quickly, to the other member of the TASCO Council Caucus, Councilwoman Parker, working with Blondell on the Rule for Two for the jobs. I appreciate Councilman O's interest in the heroin addiction, and I know this is something he reintroduced from last year. Councilman Dom, in the summer, hit the ground running and has visited my district and has seen firsthand of the impact of what this national heroin addiction is doing to neighborhoods like the ones I serve. And I particularly want to thank Councilman Jones for his courage and the recognition of the growing and the significant value that the Muslim community brings to the city of Philadelphia. I have a very important mosque in my district, whose members are the business owners and have done tremendous things in the community, and that recognition is long due, and I welcome that conversation about how do we ensure that we are being open to the diversity in recognizing people's space and personal religion and culture. And I look forward to working with my new colleagues. I'm reminded that Harrisburg is still, has not acted. I'm very concerned around the situation with our schools, as has been highlighted by Councilman Green around the tragedy that happened, and the fact that, you know, despite the $400 million-plus dollars that this legislative body has brought to the table over the last four years, it is not enough. And I hope that we continue to be very laser-focused on the need so that no one puts their lives in danger, as was the case of this building, this courageous building engineer. And that I remind us that a few years ago, when we talked about school closures, we talked about really, really bad buildings. Many buildings built in the 1900s. Just this holiday season, I went to Shepherd Elementary School, where the 25th Police District celebrated with us a second holiday event. And we were in a small room that serves as the gym, the lunchroom, the library, the auditorium in a building that was built in 1908 and requires millions of dollars in renovations, and that, you know, due to these funding challenges, we keep putting folks in harm's way. And I think we need to be more deliberate about making sure that our kids are not only in physically safe buildings, but that we're able to meet basic needs, let alone the academic opportunities that they all deserve. So I'm encouraged. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and so am I. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really thought this was going to be my first and possibly last council session as a member, because I knew I was going to win the Powerball. But I just really want to say briefly, I'm very humbled to be even, be able to sit in this seat, because there's been a lot of people who've been able to help me get here from my former boss and mentor, Councilwoman Tascow, and a number of people that have helped support me. But District Council President Pete Matthews often says that the city works because we do, and city council works because the staff does. And I really just want to thank the staff for all their years of work, for those who've helped me in this transition, because they really work very hard for the city of Philadelphia and do a tremendous job for the city, but often not appreciated and sometimes underpaid, but they do a great job. So thank you.
Thank you. As a former staffer, I can... All right. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kim.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just want to add my voice to the mix about how proud I am to be a part of this body. I want to reinforce what Councilwoman Sanchez said about the collaborative spirit that has certainly welcomed me from all quarters of council, and I'm incredibly grateful for that. And in particular, I think that as we embark on this new legislative session and we witness sort of the partisan bickering and division that exists in our state and national politics, it's really amazing and important for me to be part of a body that works together to support our city, where we sit and come together to make sure that we work for the good of the constituents that we serve. And we do face a lot of challenges ahead, not the least of which is the school district and that we have a Harrisburg that is seven, eight months into not passing a budget, and we may have a governor who might have to look at an extended budget to make up for this. But nonetheless, as we wrestle through some of these more difficult circumstances, I just want to emphasize that despite all those difficulties, right now, it is my belief that city council is the most effective elected body in this state. It's sure not Harrisburg. And that's why I ran for city council. That's why I'm looking forward to being together with all of my colleagues and looking forward to modeling what it looks like when we, the electeds, are held accountable to the public we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes... Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. We've heard some of our new members speak, and we certainly look forward to working with them. And as one of the oldest in experience, people and members of this body, we say all of us who are here look forward to the entire body working well together to improve the lives of all in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I had not prepared to make any comments today, but when I hear about the opinions being expressed about a body in which I just happened to spend 10 years serving in, and unfortunately, during the midst of this transition, did not have the opportunity to actually transition, right? Because up until January 3rd at 11:59 PM, I was still a member of the Pennsylvania House of Representatives and recently resigned as Chair of the Philadelphia delegation. But I wanted to be very clear in sending a message to members of the Philadelphia delegation and Republican members on the other side of the aisle, along with the Democratic Caucus, that while local governments across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and school districts across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania are suffering as a result of the inaction of Harrisburg, I want to be very clear that our goal is to see them come together and to work together. And because I was a part of that body, I never want those members who represent Philadelphia to think that we don't believe their work, and we happen to have one who was here a little earlier, Representative Dawkins. We know they are working hard to achieve much-needed bipartisan compromise. And I will tell you from my days of sitting there that the way to achieve compromise is to not sort of constantly point fingers to identify what is sort of always wrong, but try to find a way to bring both sides to the middle. In addition to that, I have to give a shout-out to Mass Jirallah, who is here, who is one of the largest mosques in the city of Philadelphia, and it happens to be in the heart of the Ninth Councilmatic District. So Councilman Jones, thank you so very much for your leadership, and again to my colleagues in Harrisburg, on both sides of the aisle, specifically to the Republicans. We want you to come together and work together to get something accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And the chair again...
Thank you very much. Council President, I rethought my answer, and I wanted to be a little more clear about the answer. The RFP is out and is due back in February, the end of February. It may be possible legally to discontinue the RFP, because no favoritism has been shown, and reissue the RFP with a local hiring and investment preference. LA opens it up. Anyone can bid on it, but what they require is that you show voluntarily, if you want, that you have a program of employing persons who need work, local persons within the geographic area, and that you're going to put in a certain amount of investment dollars into the infrastructure, the company, whatnot, of Los Angeles County. That could be added, and the RFP could be reissued. And while they did that, they sought the approval of the U.S. Department of Transportation. So they were successful that way, and so to speak more exactly, I believe, while it may not happen, that it is possible, it is possible that the RFP could be reissued. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for that clarity. There being no additional speeches, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that city council stand adjourned until Thursday, January 28, 2016, at 10:00 AM.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, January 20, 2016, at 10:00 AM. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you all very much.